Yeah.
You know, it's not my preference to hold meetings when we just have one items, but because we're on a virtual platform now, my hope is that it's not as much of a trouble for the commissioners and that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm, I was just expecting more work.
Yeah.
But it's been.
Hi, Erica.
Hello.
Do we have an applicant who's going to be here today or is it just you presenting?
Um, I, the applicant knows. I don't know if they're showing up.
Okay.
There's a, there's a attendee on the line that's Z Hang or Zhang. Is that, that wouldn't be your applicant, would it be?
Z Hang. Um, oh, it might be the architect. For the project. But I thought that the project was going to be on consent, so originally, so they may or may not attend.
It's one after nine. We can at least start with the preliminaries of our meeting. Are we ready, Janice?
Yes.
Okay, then I want to welcome the community who's watching to our planning commission of today of August 26. We'll start off with the pleasure of allegiance. Janice, could you again?
By religion, to the flag, we know.
Of the South America and to the Republic, for which this stands, one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start off with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chairman Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz is absent and staff is represented by Monamis Fox Montes.
Yeah, revised minutes in front of us. Is any more corrections, additions, changes? Or if not, a motion to accept?
I will move that we accept the minutes as revised.
I second.
Okay, Janet, can you call roll call?
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here. Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Sorry, here. I mean, yes.
Chairman Hansen.
Aye. Janet, we're going to get down to with the participation portion of the program. Can you tell what the ground rules are for our audience?
Sure. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raise hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak on the agenda item. For joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt and connection with each agenda item before using the raise hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you may begin speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. First portion we're going to enter into is the public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. These are for things that we will not be talking about regularly scheduled and we cannot take any action today. It will just be informing the us for our own information. Do we have anybody who has expressed a desire?
None.
None. If you're in the audience watching and wish to speak to an item, this is the time to raise your hand and let Janet know. Give a couple of seconds to see if anything happens here. Not seeing any. We'll proceed to our first item of the agenda. And could I have Janet read it in, please?
Agenda item number one, owner Lee Sarin, applicant Dennis Salon, file number PLN 2019 00323, location 670 Oak Parkway in Emerald Lake Hills, and the project planner is Erica Adams.
Hey, good morning. One second, let me share my screen. Okay. Good morning, members of the planning commission. My name is Erica Adams. I'm with the planning and building department. I'm here today to present planning case PLN 2019 00323, location is 670 Oak Parkway, and it is consideration of a design review permit and a non-conforming use permit to allow the construction of, you guys are blocking me, of a 7,000, hold on, your screen is, okay. 7,600, 7,786 square foot parcel at 670 Oak Parkway. And one tree will be removed. One moment, sorry, you're, the Zoom thing is blocking my screen. It's making it hard to see. Anyways, okay, sorry. The, the application consists of a design review permit and the non-conforming use permit. The work involved will be demolition of the existing structures and construction of a new residence, removal of one tree. As mentioned, the project is located in Emerald Lake Hills on a substandard sized parcel. The project is subject to design review by the Emerald Lake Hills Design Review Officer and needs a use permit to allow three exceptions in the RH zoning district needing relief from lot coverage, floor area, and height. To allow 28.8% of lot coverage where 25% is allowed, allow 2,725 square feet of floor area or 2,400 square feet is the maximum and to allow a portion of the house to be at 29 feet or 28 feet is the maximum. This is the existing development. And you can see the tree behind the garage that's going to need to be removed. These are the plans for the project to allow will be the existing development, and this is the proposed development, and this is the tree that's going to be removed. It's just the civil plans. The existing floor plans. The proposed floor plans, first and second floor. And roof plan. These are the elevations. These elevations are the revised ones after the design review hearing that incorporate the recommended changes that are discussed in the staff report. And that's just cross section and the materials. This gives you an idea of what the house looked like prior to the revisions that were requested. Okay, so I'll go through the permits and how the project complies. The project was heard at the February 7th Emerald Lake Hills Design Review Officer Hearing and was recommended for approval with some modifications that were agreed to by the applicant. It was recommended that some siding materials be changed and the application of them and the patterns be revised to improve the elevations and that the roof pitch be changed to comply and include a pitch. So the project has to comply with these design review standards, site planning, architectural styles, building shape, bulk facades, roof materials, underground utilities, and the key aspects for this project would, of compliance are that the topography is minimally altered because they're using the existing footprint primarily of the house. The colors and materials blend with the natural setting, the roof is pitched, and the facades are well articulated and proportioned. The project will not comply with the residential hillside zoning district in three aspects. Lot coverage, floor area, and height. To, to achieve, to have a use permit approved, the non-conforming use permit findings must be met. There are five findings. I won't read them all, but they're in the staff report and they're listed here. But going through the findings with the project, that the project is proportioned to the parcel. The parcel is substandard, so the, the minimum parcel size in the RH zone district is 12,000 square feet, which would allow a 3,600 square foot house. And the subject parcel is 7,086 square feet, which would only allow a 2,400 square foot house. For both parcels, the, the parking requirement is the same. And the parking requirement on a standard sized parcel would only take up about 10% of the allowable floor area. But in this case, it takes up 15% of the allowable floor area. And that would have all of the, it would allow us for a smaller house if the exception was not granted, smaller living area based on the ratio of living area to garage. And for lot coverage, the parcel is going to require a driveway bridge because the new garage is going to be connected to the house versus the existing development where the garage is right at the right away. Because the, the driveway bridge is greater than 18 inches in height, that now counts towards lot coverage. And the driveway bridge alone is causing the project to be over lot coverage. And then as far as height, it was the design review officer's recommendation that the project include pitched roofs to comply with the design standard. To, to, to achieve that and not have the entire design be modified and alter the interior space in, in one area, the roof height needed to go to 29 feet. And in part, that, that height is driven by the fact that it's on the downside and the, the natural grade is lower. The house itself is not, the interior space of the house is not exceeding 28 feet. But that was a recommendation from the design review officer and who is myself. And I suggested that they add that to the non-conforming use permit because the project better complies with the design standards. Other use permit findings are that other contiguous land has been investigated for addition to make the project comply, the, the parcel comply with the, the minimum parcel size. And all the adjacent parcels are developed and also are substandard. Another standard is that the proposed development is, is, is as nearly in conformance with the zoning regulations as, that are currently in fact as reasonably possible. The size of the parcel and the topography make the meeting the, the RH NDR zoning regulations difficult. And the, the exceptions that are being requested are smaller and reasonable and similar to those asked for, for other non-conforming parcels. There would be no, the, the project's been reviewed by multiple reviewing agencies, Public Works and Drainage and City of Redwood City, and there were no concerns raised about the project. It is not located on the coast. And it was evaluated during design review, the project was evaluated for whether or not it would impact the neighbors in a detrimental manner and no, no situations arose where the, it was not determined that the, that the project was going to detrimentally impact the neighborhood and also it was determined that it was compatible with surrounding residences. And also that the use permit approval does not constitute granting of special privileges. This, this proposal complies with the minor exceptions. These exceptions are similar to those that are readily granted through the HIE process and granted for non-conforming parcels through use permits. So this is not a special privilege for this project. So that basically concludes my presentation. And I would ask that the planning commission approve the design review permit and non-conforming use permit for county file number PLN 2019 00323, based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Erica. We'll start off with Commissioner Gupta. Do you have any questions for staff? You're muted.
Who's muted?
Okay. Yes, I do. Am I on? Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So my question is, in this, when we say floor area or the square footage, let's go with the square footage. How much of it is the garage? Is that included in the total square footage?
Included in the, it is included in the square footage. It's like 3, 342, I think. 342 square feet is the garage.
Okay. And earlier, our present structure has the garage is not attached.
Correct.
Is it still included in there when we take this total square footage?
They're going to be demolishing the garage and the house. Everything, they're going to demolish everything on the parcel. And then the new garage is going to be attached to the house.
Understood. But in the table, when we see a certain square footage for the present structures.
Yes, it would be.
That also include the garage?
The garage is included for the square footage of the entire parcel, yes.
Of the entire parcel.
Yeah. The existing development is also non-conforming.
The old one, okay.
Yes.
But the regulations may have changed since then? Is that?
No, it was just built that way.
Okay. Okay, all right. My question is, were there any attempts really made to minimize the these variations or variances that the applicant is requesting?
Well, honestly, I think the only one that they would could possibly try to reduce would be the floor area. I mean, with the garage bridge to, the only way to have the garage connected to the house would be to have the bridge. The bridge counts towards floor area. So that eats up a fair amount of their floor area. The house itself conforms with, I'm sorry, not floor area, lot coverage. So the house itself complies with lot coverage. It's just that the bridge to connect the road to the house puts them over. And then the height, it's just one tiny point that goes up. And personally, I think the house looks much better and is consistent with the, the pitch roofs. Because I hear, as design review officer, I hear all the time, if there's no pitch, they'll say, that will be the house that people will use to say, well, they didn't have a pitch. So I really frown on like allowing these. They, they would have to, I think where the, the roof pitch is because it goes over a room, the, the interior height is, I think, less than, in one corner, it's right about eight feet. And so to make, to bring that down, you'd have to bring the whole pitch down to make that room that, in that one side, less than eight feet, which, you know, is not a comfortable space, especially for a new house. And so that's why that, that goes up. We, we readily grant HIES for 250. And also, it's just, you know, construction wise, I mean, I'm making their case for them. They, they didn't raise all these issues, but instruction wise, it's just to, it, you just, you just want a little bit more space. I mean, 2,700 square feet. So they have, they're going to have about 2,400 square feet of living area, which is not an unreasonably sized house. And also, I think, I think because it's two stories, you don't have the same, you know, impact to the community of having the extra square footage because it's stacked. So they're not, you know, impose, taking up the entire parcel per se.
Okay. So I was trying to take a look at the neighborhood on Google. Got a little bit of a feel. So are most of the lots kind of comparable in terms of construction on them?
Well, I mean, everything's going to be older. This is going to be a new, a new style. It will be set down the hill. And I think the, you know, they're using wood siding. So it, you know, it does comply with the wooded feel.
Okay.
I don't know if I can pull up Google Earth, but, but, um, yeah, it's going to, I mean, it is, it's going to have a different style than the other houses, but I think it's compatible with the overall Emerald Lake Hill neighborhood. A lot of the houses on this street are, are older. They're not, they're not as many new houses on these smaller lots.
Okay. I didn't see any picture of a complete, like a rendition of the house. Is there, do you have anything like that?
They do, let's see.
Like there are pieces, but I don't.
Well, they have, okay, so they, because they changed, they didn't update their rendering. So this would be their rendering. This is all that's technically required. But this is, you know, this is the closest you'll get. So they're going to be using siding and gray, you know, wood siding.
Okay. So are these two stories plus a basement?
No, the basement's going away. It's just two stories.
Pardon me?
Just two stories.
Two story, okay.
There's no basement.
Their drawings are quite confusing. They name them differently. One says main floor. Now you don't know which is the main floor. Then there's a storage area. So which side is the garage? Can you just point me just for my own clarification? Where is the driveway in the garage?
This is the front elevation. They're not showing the driveway bridge, which would, you know, connect right here. This is the garage.
Right here, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Yeah, that's, there's, you can see the bridge here. And so all of this is counting towards lot coverage. But it's not really, you know, it's not, it's, it is lot coverage, but it's just, it, it's just a necessity.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
One other question that I had is I read, it says that only the new utilities will be underground. What about, are there any that are not underground that exist which will be left as they are?
The new house will, everything is considered new, connecting to the new, new house.
Okay.
So electrical is the main one we're concerned about, but electrical will be underground.
Okay, electrical would be underground. All right. And it also says that it's a high fire hazard area. So is that being taken into consideration in the design?
Yes, I mean, the fire department always reviews for materials. So they, these are materials that they accept. That's why you see so much duck all the time.
So much what?
Ducko.
Ducko. Okay. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Erica.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Ramirez. Any questions?
Yes, let me see. The noticing has obviously assumed that the neighbors within the proximity to this project have been well notified?
Yeah, we, we use this standard procedure for mailing out. I mean, Janet can talk to that, but you know, we, I produce the labels for 300 feet and, and I'm sure Janet mailed those out.
And so far, we, we have not received any feedback from anybody.
No one attended, no one attended the design review hearing and I haven't received any emails or any correspondence about the project.
Okay. I'm just going to touch a little bit on the fire side since, you know, it's a very timely subject at this time. But I, I wish that, you're, you're talking about wood siding. And I know that.
Artificial.
I know that area very well, and I think that they may be able to achieve the same look if they actually use more like a cement board.
It's, it's not real wood.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, no, it's, let me see, hold on. So this is, it's like a, like a Hardy board kind of thing. I can't read it, it's too small.
Yeah, I couldn't read it either. Okay, so no, that's fine then.
Yeah, they don't, nobody uses real wood. It's too expensive for one. And yeah, it's, it's just siding that looks like.
But it's obvious because, you know, that is a fire hazard and, and that is a fire you know, propensity to fire in that area.
Certainly.
Yeah. Let me see.
I see. There we go.
So most.
Final, no, that's the way, no, it doesn't have it there. Yeah, that's not, that's not redwood.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, that's good. So most of the additional square footage that has been requested pretty much goes into the, the bridge for the new garage. Am I correct on that?
The lot coverage, not the floor area. Yeah, the lot coverage, not the floor area.
Right. So without that, that bridge, I mean, pretty much they would be within.
Correct.
Required, okay. So in general, I mean, it doesn't seem too out of proportion that, you know, we're not granting a huge amount of additional square footage so that the house can be bigger.
Right.
Right?
Well, you, you are granting like about 300 square feet. So that's with two rooms, basically.
Correct, yeah. But I mean, but I'm, my point is that most of that additional square footage is going to the bridge, not so much so that we can create a much bigger house.
No, the bridge is only for lot coverage. There's no floor area involved in the bridge.
That's right, okay.
That's, yeah, that's why I'm just trying to clarify. So the, the floor area is for a bigger house. Yeah, it with, without, without the exception, they would end up, because you'd have to deduct the 340 from the two. So they would end up with about a 2,000 square foot living area house.
Oh, I see, okay. All right. Okay, no, no additional questions at this time. Thanks.
Commissioner Ketchum, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I understand the reasonableness of the extra foot on the height and also the lot coverage due to the driveway. What trips me up is the floor area and I, but then as I read it, I realized, you know, particularly the floor plan because it's. Because it's, it's modest, it looks like a modest house and, and yet even the tiny original existing house. Is exceeds the limits, you know, so I look at the zoning and I'm thinking, what's going on here? That the. It's what, low density and. And yet seemingly most of the parcels are. Substandard and so then I think, well, why was this zoning put in place and? If they're all getting exceptions, what is the point here? Other than to encourage disregard for zoning standards? I just. Don't really understand that. How did this, I mean, I don't expect you to go into all this today. It's just. Disconcerting to me, the, the parcel's standard size. The parcel existing substandard size sounds big to me compared to the coast side. And therefore that's leads to my. Confusion with this. It just seems like to have a whole neighborhood where every single house apparently has to have. Exceptions. Yeah, I, I. I don't know if you have anything to help me with this confusion or what?
The Emerald Lake Hills area. The zoning does, like I said, a standard, a quote unquote, standard size house. I mean. Parcel would be 12,000 square feet. So, you know, significantly larger than, than this. And. You know, using that standard, you, the lot coverage and floor area, lot coverage being 25% and floor area for 30%. In order to maintain the wooded feel of the. The neighborhood. However, like you're saying, on smaller lots, just because, you know, you, you're. Even a 2400 square foot house is going to cut into all of that. More substantially than a 12,000 square foot lot. You, you, you know, they're, they're competing desires, basically. And, and the lots, you know, existed as they were and they're, they, you know, they were legal lots because there were houses on them. And the, the new zoning got overlaid on top and, and that's just, you know, where they are. So when you're trying to. You know, certainly the, the plant, you know, have taken. Nonconforming use permits to the planning commission and, and the commission has approved. Greater exceptions than this.
In that neighborhood?
I'm sorry.
In that neighborhood?
Yeah, in, in Emerald Lake Hills. So.
The, the house next door to the west, just looking at the aerial view, seems to have much more lot coverage than this one. I mean, you just. It, it just, I don't know when the zoning was put into place and what the reason for it was, because it just doesn't seem to fit with what's on the ground. It's all pretty well built out and. And then you have across the street, which is uphill, making things look bigger. Plus it has medium low density. They're allowed to have more density.
About the general plan overhead.
Pardon?
Oh, I don't know who else is talking. I, I don't know about the general plan overlays. They probably were tied to the size of the parcel more so than the zoning. And as Commissioner Gupta mentioned, there were, there certainly were houses that were built prior to the existing zoning. And so there are a lot of. There's a lot of development in Emerald Lake Hills that already exceeds. What is allowed? And, you know, if the, the existing development could have applied for a home improvement exception for another 250 cube square feet and. That is pretty much, you know, those are relatively straightforward grantings of the additional square footage. Without the nonconforming use permit, you know, if it complied to the. To the setbacks.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that and, and that don't really feel comfortable with that either, but that's what it is. So I'm just, you know, I'm not.
Well, yeah, I'm just.
Seeing I'm opposed to this, these exceptions.
I understand, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And I, I guess I, I'm just trying to put it all in perspective. And we don't, we don't really have. I think we haven't set up the, the clearest guidelines for what the, the floor area cutoff should be when people are asking for these substandard ones. I, I, I would say, you know, in this situation. It would have been nice if they had. Complied a little bit more with the, the square footage, but also I think that. The design doesn't really, you know, there's, there's no other impact to having that extra 300 square feet. You know, it's not like there's a, there's something.
Yes, I agree also. And as you look at the plan, it's not like they have a whole bunch of extra big rooms. They've got.
Right, they don't have a library and a playroom.
Obviously, the bedrooms are not large. It's not a luxurious house. So, you know, I'm not going to object to it. I just. Objecting to, I guess I'm objecting to the zoning where apparently every lot in the neighborhood has to get these, has to and will get all these exceptions. So.
Well, Emerald Lake Hills is a very large area and so there's a lot of variety. I mean, there are some like one acre parcels out there, but. There, there are certainly these tracks similar to on the coast where they're just small. Parcels all bunched together.
All right, thank you.
I would just offer an additional observation, and I don't know that this is necessarily the case, but I, I do know that. Many years ago, the Emerald Lake Hills community was dependent on septic systems. And I think it was in the 1970s, late 1970s, they were able to connect to sewer. So it may be that some of the more restrictive zoning dates back to the days in which. The properties were served by septic systems, which meant you just, it wasn't possible to achieve larger sizes because you needed adequate room on your site for a septic system. That's just a hypothesis on my part.
It seemed, as I was reading it, it changes. According to how steep the parcel is. I mean, it becomes more substandard if the parcel is steeper. So. I thought it was something to do with construction techniques and obviously from what I see on the coast side, that's never a barrier. To construction, but. Anyway, I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, just another comment is that I'm looking at. The, the map of all the parcels in the neighborhood on, on, in that area. And there are just. It looks like there are just handful of lots. Between. Five and eight, I would say roughly, that are larger than this lot. So that means that. Most of them are. Sub, substandard lots here. Just to support Commissioner Ketchum's argument here. Just a comment.
We'll move now to the applicant's opportunity to make a presentation or comment on staff if they so wish. Do we have? The applicant or representative of the applicant online?
Um, I don't, or actually. I did see a hand raised, so that might be the applicant. Hold on just a second. Can you hear us?
Oh, hi there. I'm, I'm, I'm Anthony Chow. I'm the architect and engineer for the project.
Sure. Do you like to comment to the commission?
Oh, yes, yes. I really appreciate your, your time and, and also your opinions. And I, I just like to stress out that, point out that. Yeah, we spent a lot of time and effort trying to. Comply with the, with the zoning requirements and the, and the lock coverage and the floor area. And, and the one main reason to have the floor area over 2400 square feet. Is the area under the garage. The new attached garage. That's now used as a new family room because of the steep. Slope. And elevation difference between the street level. And, and, and the elevation at where the building, the new building pad is. There's a big area underneath the garage. And even though if we don't use that space, that space will still be considered as a floor area. So that's the main reason. We enclose that space and use that as a family room.
Okay. Is, do you have any more comments? If not, I'll open up for the commissioners to see if they have any questions. Have you?
Okay, I mean, that's all my want to say. So if you have any questions, you can go ahead.
Okay. So I'll start off again with Commissioner Gupta. Did you have any follow up questions of the? The applicant?
I, I'll pass, said this time maybe. Little late. I'll pass at this time.
Oh, you pass.
Want to move on to other commissioners?
Commissioner Ramirez, you have any follow up?
No, no additional questions at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'm good too. So we'll go to the public portion. Janice, you want to step us through how, again, how to do this?
Sure, I'm actually going to have my colleague Angela Montes go over the public comment portion. Angela?
Thank you, Janice, and thank you, Chairman Hansen. We are now taking public comment for item number one. As a reminder, if you wish to speak, you put, can you please raise your hand through the Zoom feature or for those joining by phone? You can press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. And Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this point.
So seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Janice, we go through roll call.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta? I don't see Commissioner Gupta. I think she dropped off.
Just came back.
Okay.
Give her a second.
Commissioner Gupta? Can you hear us yet?
Commissioner Gupta, there she is.
Can you hear me? I was disconnected for a moment. What is the motion on for closing of the public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, aye.
Chairman Hansen? Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going into the discussion portion. I'll start off with my comments, you know. You know, most FARs and lot coverage and things like that have to, we're really, we're put in a place to. Stop many mansions on, on lots. It was really a design control. Because we really don't want to, we get into problems and we get to be subjective and we try to figure out the parameters. And so we came up with a bunch of numbers that for most part work for various good standard lots on very flat areas. I have no problem with the FAR on this project. I have no problem with the height because it's on the hillside. It's down on the hillside. The impact is the two neighbors on hill crest looking up on the hill, you know, they could dominate their backyard. I was actually out in the neighborhood and. I don't see. A material impact of what's already existing in the neighborhood. I. The height exception again is. Is still going to be lower than the houses on the left and the right, just for visual on, on street. So I really, for all those concerns, they're not my concerns on this project and I, I'm worried to go forward. My big worry, which was also brought up with Commissioner Ramirez. Is, it was frightening driving through the neighborhood. This week. It was, there is brush in the canyons, there's. It's. It's just frightening. You really need to be seriously to have a conversation about becoming a firewise community. Otherwise, for all the. Wonderful beautifulness of a lush community will be lost when you have nothing left but a foundation in a chimney. So. Work with your community. Become more aware that. A lot more needs to be done in your neighborhood. But. With that comment, I, I am in support of this. We'll go on to Commissioner Gupta. Do you have any comments?
I just briefly, yes. I am very happy to see that. Things like. The. Minimum setbacks and. And the proportion. How. Trying to the neighborhood. And I. Lot of. Variances did not always in favor of those. The. Grade of this. Oh. But the, the right. Florida, not real. His own. So yes, I am in favor of it. The fire hazard part, yes, I think that should be very carefully looked at. We, being in current situation, I completely agree with what Chairman Hansen said there. So I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yeah, just to follow up on some of your comments here. Yeah, you know, that, that area is a very challenging area and one only wonders, you know, what, what they were. Thinking when they were subdividing this area because. We have so many, you know, an eclectic. Area with, you know, some lots that are very large, some, and we have many, many substandard because that 12,000 is a significant amount. But not every lot there conforms to that area, to that, to that size. Which, you know, even this particular lot, I think. If you, if it was in a flat area, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be talking about that if they are restriction, I think. In general, I think it, it, it's well proportioned, I think, what they're asking. To the way they're trying to set up the house there. Again, it's the, the topography of the area makes it very challenging. And I, I would agree with the chairman. That in general, you know, we have to be very proactive about the, the fire dangers of this, this area. And that's why I was, you know, coming down on, making sure that. The materials used on the, on the structures are. Fire resistant. You know, because of the, obviously the situation that we're living in these days. In general, I am in favor. Of the project. I think it's well articulated, especially that, that, you know, the, the extra one foot in height. I don't think it makes that big of a difference, being that this house is on the downside of the street. So I think that the massing of the structure, for the most part, you're not going to be able to see or doesn't make a huge impact. So I am in favor of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum, you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I too, I think the height exception and the lot coverage. Exception are perfectly reasonable. And as far as the floor area goes, well, okay, let me just say, the, the existing house appears to be, the existing small house. Appears to be about the smallest in the neighborhood, but apparently it's already exceeds the maximum floor area. So I guess, as I said, my problem is that the zoning, the development standards for the neighborhood are just. I'm not happy with those and that's not what we're here to talk about today, so I can support the project. And that's not what we're here to talk about today, so I can support the project.
Hearing a majority and support, can I get a motion for acceptance?
May I make the motion?
Please do.
All right. Okay, so the planning commission, commission recommends approving the design review permit and non-conforming use permit for county file number PLN 2019 dash 00323 based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A of the staff report.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor will say aye or nay during roll call. Can, Janice, can you handle that for us, please?
Sure. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chairman Hanson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
S four zero, it's unanimous, and congratulations. And we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you, Chairman Hanson and commissioners. I believe the next item is about correspondence. I do not have any correspondence to report to you today. Although I will note, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we are working on our comment letter regarding the high-speed rail environmental impact report. And as soon as that's completed, I'll be happy to share that with you. Moving on to study session for the next agenda. I am not recommending that we conduct a study session at this point. I believe we have two items, at least two items. And Janice, if you wouldn't mind giving the commissioner a summary of the items expected for next meeting?
Right, it's actually only one item for next meeting, and that is Renee's Public Works and County Parks.
That's right. So County Parks and Public Works have collaborated to develop a five-year maintenance program for county facilities on the coast side. Many of those maintenance activities are exempt, but there are some maintenance activities that do require permits if you're working within, in a repairing environment, for example, needing to fix a culvert. So rather than doing those in a piecemeal fashion, we've encouraged these departments to put together a five-year plan that will be kind of a comprehensive action plan for dealing with necessary maintenance. And it will establish the parameters and protocols for such maintenance activities. So that I'm sure will be the discussion next week. By next meeting, that is. So that concludes the portion regarding the study session in the next meeting. I'll move on to the director's report. With the fires on all of our minds, I wanted to let you know that at 11 o'clock today, I'll be participating in a meeting with the Emergency Operations Center for the county. We're developing the plan to make sure that all the essential services are in place in the areas that have been evacuated, so we can get people back to their homes as soon as possible. So as I mentioned before the meeting, San Mateo County has been fortunate in that we have not sustained nearly the type of structural damage that we've experienced in Santa Cruz County. Nevertheless, just like the last item, the Emerald Lake Hills area, the areas that have been evacuated are, have very difficult terrain when it comes to firefighting. And because this fire has embedded itself deep within some of these rugged, open space areas, it's going to take some time to put those fires out. So we're going to have to be very careful about bringing people back into the evacuated area. But we know that folks are anxious to get home, as I am. So we're going to be doing, doing our best to make that happen as soon as possible.
Dave?
Yes, go ahead, Chairman.
When an emergency like this and a community loses its structures, is there expedited streamlined permitting to, so they can get back to where they were?
Yes, in that, in the coastal zone, the coastal act in our local coastal program exempts the replacement of a structure destroyed by a natural disaster from the need to obtain a coastal development permit. So there's no coastal development permit requirements applied to the replacement of a structure, provided it's same size, same location. The reconstruction of homes will need to comply with the building code. And I'll be working with my staff to figure out what we can do to process those building permits as expeditiously as possible. So while there's still subject to building permit requirements, we're going to do everything we can to make that process as painless as possible. And I will be keeping the commission informed on our progress in rebuilding damaged areas as we move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So speaking of emergencies, another emergency that's been encountered in the county is with the Marata Road Bridge. I might have mentioned this at the last meeting. The Marata, I hope I'm saying that right. It's a pedestrian and bicycle bridge that is right on the edge of the coastline. And it's a critical link in our coastal trail. It's, other than Highway One, the only way in which folks coming, traveling laterally along the coast can get over Barroyo de Enmedio Creek is the name of the creek. And this is at the southern end of Miramar. The Public Works Department and the professional engineers that work for our Public Works Department have determined that the bridge is unsafe for use. And so they've had to implement an emergency closure. And it's a very unfortunate situation because this is such a key link in our coastal trail. So we are working with Caltrans to determine if there are safe detours that we could route pedestrians and bicyclists on. The concept is that we could perhaps create a barrier between the vehicles and the pedestrians and bicyclists on Highway One by putting up a K-rail barrier to provide a safe area. Caltrans has expressed serious concern about that because of the hazards that such a barrier might pose to vehicles traveling at higher speeds. So we're working through that issue with them. But I think most importantly is we want to get that bridge fixed as soon as possible. So in accordance with the emergency provisions of our local coastal program, I will be bringing to this commission a coastal permit to address the temporary closure of this bridge as well as the plan for its replacement. So I'm working with Public Works to make that happen as soon as possible. They do have an application pending with the California Coastal Commission to replace the bridge. However, that application remains incomplete because the Coastal Commission has asked for quite a bit of more technical information. So I'll be assisting Public Works and addressing those information needs and hopefully getting this bridge replaced as soon as possible. One thing that came up at the last meeting was there were some questions about the status of the Chevron Station project. This is also on the coast side. You'll recall that we had an application before the commission quite a few months ago to resolve a violation where the Chevron Station had removed a planter, a landscape planter that provided a barrier between the vehicles in the station and anyone traveling along Highway One. That replacement planter was deemed to be inadequate by the commission. It was smaller than the one that was previously there. And I know that the commissioners are desiring resolution to this matter as quickly as we can. So just yesterday, I had a conversation with the applicant. And that's follows up after a conversation that was had with the property owner. And I made it clear to the applicant that we like to see a revised plan that provides a landscape planter that is at least as big as what was there before and preferably larger. And we talked about various options to achieve that objective. We also talked about the importance of locating the planter on the Chevron property as opposed to within the Caltrans right-of-way. Because what we'd like to see is eventually the installation of a sidewalk and a bike lane along that segment of Highway One. And we think within the Caltrans right-of-way is where that sidewalk and bike lane will go. So we want to reserve that area for that purpose. And we believe there's adequate room on site to provide at least an equivalent and preferably larger planting area than was there previously. So I'll stop there and let you ask me any questions you might have about that particular case. Seeing none, I'll move on to the Big Wave Project. As you know, the applicants have been making a concerted effort to address all the conditions of approval that they need to address in order to move that project forward. And they're at the point where they are about ready to initiate installation of some of the infrastructure that needs to be put in place so the project can proceed, specifically a new water line. And so I wanted to give the commission a heads up that we anticipate releasing a pre-construction notice for that work within the upcoming days of the conditions of approval, that we alert the neighbors in the Pillar Point manufactured home of the upcoming construction. And so I just want to give you a heads up that that notice is likely to be released soon. And then finally, speaking of manufactured homes, I wanted to alert the commission to an application that we've received to redevelop what's known as the Bay Shore Villa Trailer Park. This is on the east side of Highway 101. There's a number of trailers and manufacturers home that currently occupy the site. The owner of that site is proposing to replace the trailer park with a complex of, I think, five buildings, multi-story buildings that would serve a mix of low-income, moderate-income, and regular-income folks. It's 20% affordable and it raises significant concerns with compliance with our mobile home zoning. The commission may recall that we've put in place requirements or standards that protect manufactured home communities and that requires that if they are to be redeveloped, that they be 100% affordable. In this case, the applicant is challenging the legality of those requirements. At least it appears they are, based on their submittal. And they are hoping to take advantage of some of the new state laws that require expedited processing of certain housing projects. So they actually do fall under some of these new state laws. SB 330 in particular is the name of the law that they've submitted this under. And we will be meeting with them within the next few weeks to talk about all the issues and challenges they'll face in terms of moving this project forward. Not only is it inconsistent with our mobile home zoning regulations, we have concerns about its consistency with other general plan policies. And we also have significant concerns about the suitability of the site for such development, both in terms of infrastructure and in terms of sea level rise. So there's going to be a lot of discussion about this in the near future. It has come up in the recent past in that the applicant has informed the current residents of their intent, which of course has created a lot of fear and concern. And so we want to make sure that we do everything possible to protect those residents and keep them informed of what's going on. And therefore, this is likely to, you know, come out in the media and elsewhere. So I just wanted to let you know that that's likely to come up and that we will do everything we can to protect the existing residents of that mobile home park. Finally, I wanted to give you a heads up that we're working hard on a proposal regarding the application of state law for second units in the coastal zone. You might recall that you recently adopted changes to second unit regulations outside the coastal zone. And we told you we'd be coming back with new, an equivalent set of amendments that would apply in the coastal zone. One of the challenges we face with that is how to deal with some of our rural areas and areas that have been designated for resource management and for agriculture. You received a letter with regard to the inland proposal. And that letter was expressing concern about the limits on second units in the coastal zone. And so of course, there's a contingent of interested parties that would like to expand the ability to build second units in these resource management lands and in these, on these agricultural lands. But there's also the need to ensure that that is done in a manner that's consistent with the coastal act, which requires protection of ag lands and sensitive resource areas. At the moment, we believe that there's adequate opportunity to provide affordable housing within our agricultural areas and our resource management areas without having to allow second units. So for example, in the agricultural areas, in addition to a single-family home, property owners may apply to construct farm labor housing, which needs to be affordable. Also, within the agricultural district and the resource management lands, you can receive an additional density credit to allow the construction of another home if that second home is restricted to folks who can afford it. So it needs to be restricted and affordable. So we believe with those provisions in place that it's not necessary for the county to allow for second units in these agricultural and resource management lands. But we're still formulating that recommendation and rationale, and we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss these matters when it's brought before you in the near future. So just wanted to let you know we were working on that and thinking about those issues carefully. So that concludes my director's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. One thing to report. Commissioner Ketchum, you had a question?
Oh, I have an update whenever you're ready.
Mine's, last time I was reporting that the Bologna Portola Heritage Trail was before the commissions in Sacramento. It was on the consent calendar. I learned the consent calendar for my item would last one hour. Even though it was on the consent, they had to read the entire process in. And then they took a vote, and then afterwards they allowed public comment. But it got approved. So we now have officially approved by the state the naming of the trail. So that's all I wish to go. Lisa, you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, is this an update on the coastal development permit that this planning commission approved? Three to two. Three to two for a bluff top house on Arbor Lane in Moss Beach in December 2018? You may recall Commissioners took note because that was the first time the county had required a deed restricted condition of approval prohibiting future coastal armoring and requiring removal of the development when it becomes unsafe due to erosion. So the county's approval was appealed to the Coastal Commission and that hearing was held on August 14. The same coastal hazard issues raised by the Midcoast Community Council were the subject of the appeal by Committee for Green Foothills. The inadequate bluff top setbacks for the minimum 50-year design life and use of deep-drilled pier foundation for stability against buffer truth. The Coastal Commission found that the county-approved project raised substantial issues regarding coastal hazards and shoreline armoring. Coastal Commission staff's recommendation for a revised project was approved unanimously by the commission. So I have a list, a select list of four key new conditions to note that you might be interested in. Update the survey to show the current location of the bluff edge to reflect recent episodic erosion. Increase the bluff edge setback by approximately 20 feet for a total of 96 feet setback for the development. Prohibit deep piers and tieback foundation, which itself constitutes a form of shoreline armory. And apply the deed restricted, no future armoring provisions to the adjacent steep bank of the Dean Creek Ravine, which falls under the LCP definition of coastal bluff. I just thought it would be good to keep those in mind for future projects. The Coastal Commission staff report is detailed, informative reading on evaluating bluff top setbacks, which could provide insight to avoid future appeals and long project delays. It can be found with the Coastal Commission Agenda Item Eight for hearing date August 14. That's all I have, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Ketchum. That's certainly been on staff's radar and we are carefully following that. And we see this as an opportunity to develop a better understanding about the commission's expectation. And we certainly will apply what we learned to future development proposals. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll adjourn today's meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Good luck. Wish if anything I could do, I'll be there for you. I understand the beauty of your neighborhood. I'm sorry to hear the